Those don't exist anymore, do they?
No, there's no longer.
And how would this legislation affect any smaller venue?
I think it affects smaller venues positively in several ways. Currently, it's proposed a reduction from five to three and a half percent on fights that have gates under a million dollars, which saves money for the smaller promoters. It also, I think more importantly, creates an environment where California demonstrates that it's serious about these types of events and the economic benefits they bring.
Okay, well, you know, I guess, you know, if you consider boxing that vital to Los Angeles, I guess this is something that's not bad. I'm more concerned about helping some of the smaller, even some of the amateur fights that used to occur in small arenas around the city when I was growing up. You don't see those anymore. And I'm not too worried about the big championship fights. I mean, those people are, they do okay on their own. They don't need any financial help. I'm concerned about, you know, if Cal Eaton or Eileen Eaton were still operating the old Olympic Auditorium, that's the type of venue that I would be concerned about helping. I think that, really, honestly, you know, you're comparing us with New York. I'm not so sure I want to be compared with New York, to be very honest with you, you know. And, you know, there was a time when we said we can't, we couldn't get along without a professional football team in Los Angeles. We've managed very nicely to do that, by the way, until we get a decent one, that is. Not the Raiders. I think you stopped one too many, Nate. That's the problem. But anyway, I'm not sure which way to go on this. I'm going to support it because it may be good for Staples and the downtown area and hotels and so forth. But I would be more inclined to support it if it were more leaning towards benefiting the smaller venues.
Another benefit, Councilman Burnson, to the smaller venues is the weekend of this upcoming fight, there will be, there will be fights at smaller venues throughout the region, both, I think, in Bell and Universal on Friday and Saturday for ESPN and for ABC.
All right, Mr. Fuer.
Thanks, Mr. President. Chris, as much as I like you, I want to actually have Mr. Karch return to the table, please.
Thank you.
I am, I appreciate the arguments first raised by Mr. Padilla in support of this, but I must say, are there any facts to substantiate the view that major fights aren't coming to Los Angeles in particular in the absence of this legislation?
The only information we have is that there have been no major fights in California since, I believe, 1994. Whether that is because of the existence of the 5 percent fee, I don't know.
Was the 5 percent, was the 5 percent fee in place before 1994?
I don't know.
All right. Well, I don't know what to say about Las Vegas yet. So just, the, I'm getting good coaching, but I'm not sure what to ask yet. Here's, see, here's the thing. You said that there's no such cap in Las Vegas, correct?
They have a cap in Las Vegas. I don't know what the cap is. There's a cap in New York and a cap in Las Vegas.
And the Delahoya fight, of course, is here notwithstanding the fees that are currently in place, correct?
Yes.
See, here's the thing. If we're going to support legislation that gives a particular benefit to, at a consequence of diminishing the public fisc, whether it be the state money or our money, I think we need to know what the predicate facts are. You know, what is it that we have seen that this bill will change? Intuitively, it is said, if we don't have this, if we cap these fees, then it's more likely that more fights will come here. Well, that's assuming that the factor that is determinative as to where the fight goes is this. I see no evidence of that. I'm skeptical of that. We don't know whether the same fee structure was in place before 1994, so that date isn't really relevant to me at this point. As often is said by the President, I'm sure they're waiting with bated breath in Sacramento to the outcome of this debate here, but I, I'm not a fan of this in the absence of facts that substantiate the reasons we're doing it in the first place.
Mr. Holden.
You know, I have one other problem with this. I tried to buy a ticket and they told me it's going to be $900 and that's all I could pay. You know, my constituents can't pay $900 for a fight. You know, that's a lot of dough. Is that right, Chris? Where are you? $900, you told me. Okay. Now, in any case, this is going to be a big gate. And I want to reiterate, it's good for Los Angeles, Mr. Fuer, it really is. If the state chooses to
Did you agree yet?
...establish a cap and take the money from a state agency, that's what the state can do. You see, it's not likely, if you're going to benefit Los Angeles, not likely. But that's what the state can do. If the state chooses to do that, when Mr. Savornich goes up there, Ms. Goldberg goes up there, and they decide they want to do state business for the state, their whole attitude will change. And I would say, fine, I have no problem, this is becoming law, because it will benefit Los Angeles. And the Los Angeles Sports Arena, what do you call it? It's a Los Angeles, huh? It's always, they call it, some people call it the Staples Center, Los Angeles Sports Center. All right, that's what it is. That's why I can vote for it.
I'll be calm. You know, this has a parallel. The parallel is exactly what happened in football for a long time. People ask for whatever they can get, and the only thing is whether you give it to them. In football, as in other sports, they started with going from city to city and said, if you don't give it to us, we're going someplace else. We've heard that on infinitum, and so that city after city gave billionaires everything they asked for because they might go someplace else. In fact, they still go someplace else when they get a better deal, because the next one will come along and say, well, we'll not, we'll remove the cap, we won't charge you anything. And the reality is, is that I never blame them for asking. They're business people. I blame us for giving it. They're coming, they went to New York and asked for something, and now they're coming to us and they're asking for a half a million dollars on this fight, it could be, who knows, on future fights. And, and you have to ask yourself, how important is it to give into that? Or where do you draw the line? When we drew a line with the Staples Arena in the past, we benefited. We have a Staples Arena and the right people are paying for it. I think we ought to, I don't think, I just think it would be, I don't want the Don Kings of this world getting taxpayers' money because they have enough clout to come and ask for it. This was going through Sacramento. This was interesting. This was tied as a rider, or whatever you call it, to a bill on immigration, to sort of get it through, to try to get an urgency, and only because, I think, Mr. Hertz, Speaker Hertzberg and others spoke up, did it at all derail it to where it's now no longer able to get through on an urgency. The very fact that it was intended and went through a process to go through without any real public notice and public participation indicates itself what, what people were afraid of, that that is, that when people know about it, they'll hold their elected officials accountable. I'm glad we're having this debate here, because it gives us an opportunity to let people know that this is in fact going on. I would urge you to say no. I think we'll get the fights that we get. I just think that it's about values, and the values of the things that we should be concerned about are not increasing the profits of sport, of boxing promoters.
All right, we have, we have the committee report. Prepare the roll. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, two noes.
That is approved. When is it going to be heard in Sacramento? Shall we set forth with it?
It was supposed to have been heard yesterday, but because of the amendment to drop the urgency clause.
They wanted to hear from us?
And they want, yes, Mr. Farrar, yes, they did. It'll, it'll, it will be heard later this month, and probably in business and professions.
Okay, it's approved. Members of the council, 41 was called special by Ms. Goldberg, and she had to leave to go to see a relative in a hospital, so we will continue that one day. So, next item?
Item 55, 54, called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Well, maybe we better continue that one, too. Is there any problem on that?
Mr. President, I would like to have that one moved forward. Ron, we would like him at the table. This is, this is the request for funding, for additional funding on teams, too. Members of the council, we know this has probably been the most important aspect and element of what we need to be doing in this city in police accountability and police reform in terms of a risk management program. The council, after many years of not being able to deliver a system and not understanding why, we expedited the process and said we're going to cause it to be delivered. We authorized a contract to be awarded. That contract fell short from what the amount that we did award. And now that we've got the team here, working on it, producing an outline and a sketch and a framework to be brought to the council, to be brought to the Police Commission for putting into place, designing a system that can work and can be accountable and hold us all accountable, and particularly the Police Department. We do need additional money, additional money for furnishing for the, the crew that is here, and most specifically, the biggest bulk of it is for a single server, so that they can start developing the computer framework for presenting to us a contract or a proposal for a contract that we can go out to bid to get this up and running. So this is important, this cannot avoid, this cannot incur any more delays, and we have the CLA here to answer any specific questions as to the amount, as well as 54A, which is just a clarifying how we are finding the money for the award for the contract to get these people here to help us produce, taking into account all of the input from the Police Department, the Police Commission, the members of the council, the independent panel, the Inspector General, to have this program be as comprehensive as it needs to be to give us the data across the board, to have a accountability in the Police Department. Mr. Deaton, did you have anything to add?
Just that, based on the council action, my office has done everything it can to expedite and move this particular project along. Consultants, until we got the leased space, I don't know if they're still in my, still in my office space or not, and facilitating this, there was some question, I understand, relative to, should this come out of the Police Department savings or out of their own budget? Quite frankly, at this point in the fiscal year, it really doesn't matter a lot, because if there are savings, it's going to revert to the reserve fund anyway. And rather than discuss and decide what accounts have surpluses, we want to keep this on a fast track, and so this is our way of getting that accomplished.
I think the only thing we would add is that, to instruct the CLA to seek reimbursement from alternative funds if they become available, both in mid-year, end-of-year savings, or from the federal government as we go forward to get other funding from them for this system, which is very much what they want to have in place. So asking for them to seek reimbursement, I think, makes sense, but we ought not to hold up any allocation at this time from the unappropriated balance to get moving as fast as we can.
All right, Mr. Fuer.
Thanks. I just rose to agree, and John, the reason, I think both Sidney and I have the same view that Mr. Deaton does, that even though, I mean, similarly, one day, we should really just get on with this, the, as we discussed, Ms. Goldberg's questions related to the source of funds, Ms. Goldberg wanted the funds to derive from the Police Department budget, if that was at all possible. Mr. Deaton's point is, if there are, by the end of the year, extra funds in the Police Department's budget, they'll revert anyway, and have the, and it'll be the same impact as though it had taken, been taken from there in the first place. So I support moving this forward. And, and John, parenthetically, on 41, we just continued for one day for Ms. Goldberg, the staff can't be here. Can we continue it to Friday, please, instead of to tomorrow?
Yeah, there's no objections to that. Our Ms. Galanter? Okay, then we have, we have 40, 54 before us. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved.
Mr. President.
Huh? That, that's 54A?
Fifty-four, yes.
Yeah, 54 and 54A, that's what, that was a...
Mr. President, we'll ask that item 46 go forthwith as well.
Yeah. Forthwith on 46. Okay, you got that 54, 54A. Yeah, okay. All right, I think we still have 19 on the desk.
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Burnson?
Yes, members of the council, I'm in support of item 19. I just want to add one caveat. This is an extension of an existing contract, and what we should be doing is going out for an RFP to bring this into, you know, for future. And so I would, I would like to amend this report to ask that Transportation Department, within the next 90 days, go out with an RFP for future service, and I would so move as an amendment. Have a second to that, Rudy? Mr. Savornich seconds it.
Okay. Anyone else want to be heard?
It's okay. It's fine.
Was that your ticket broker on the fights, Nate? They have some $50 seats, Nate.
Item, this is item 19, right. Didn't I call this special? That is correct. Mr. President, members, the staff is not here to give a report.
Yeah.
About why you're taking lines out and, you started out being an ideal program, but now it's not so ideal, it's not living up to your expectation, et cetera, et cetera. Would you proceed? Why are you making the changes, cutting back?
Smart Shuttle started three years ago. We had some great expectations, some great hopes. There were a number of different agencies that were involved in creating Smart Shuttle, Southern California Association of Governments, MTA, DOT. We've run the program as a demonstration for two years. During that time, we gave a great deal of flexibility, latitude, to the operators of the service, to modify the service, to try to increase the farebox return. During that time, we also hoped that MTA would be able to remove service from some lightly ridden MTA routes and substitute Smart Shuttle. MTA was unable to do that. As we continued, we put higher and higher expectations on increasing ridership. Smart Shuttle began to move more as an overload supplement to MTA, operating on the same routes as MTA buses operate on, and carrying overflow, carrying passengers that would have to wait longer for MTA service, or would have to stand during the time that they rode the service. We're now, we were here in March with a report about three of the areas that we operate in, West Valley, East Valley, and South Central, and we reported at that time that most of the routes duplicate MTA routes. We're now carrying about 260,000 people a month on Smart Shuttle in the four areas. MTA has agreed to fund Smart Shuttle for a fourth year, 100 percent, no, no city involvement. And so we're very pleased with the fact that they're interested in providing more cost-effective service than they're, than they're able to provide. One of the four areas, MacArthur Park, Westlake, Koreatown, Woolshire Center, was funded for two years through the call for projects. That particular area has some city funding, 65 percent MTA funding, 35 percent city funding. That area was funded for a fourth year at about 10 percent more than the service that they're operating today. That's, that's a nutshell.
Mr. President, members, the so-called Smart Shuttle program was initially designed for the purpose of getting more operators into the business, at the same time, taking overload from MTA, et cetera. Smart Shuttle was supposed to go even to your home, leave off the regular route, make a phone call, go to your home, pick you up, et cetera. We never had any reports about the effectiveness of that kind of an operation. It didn't seem like it was reasonable or feasible, and it would work. And since then, we know darn well it doesn't work. And you've thrown good money after bad. You put millions and millions of dollars into a project, program, that was doomed to fail from the very beginning. You just took it because MTA gave you 10 million bucks. That's all. And after two years, that's the only reason why you took it, I know that. But I was not going to vote for that for 10 million. They could have used that 10 million in some other areas of transportation to support the cities, to meet the cities' needs. So here you are, they're now asking MTA for some more money. Fine, they want to give it to you? Be my guest. But we should not commit a nickel of the city's money to this program. Mr. Burnson, I understand, put an amendment in that says that you should go out for an RFP again. Is that right, Mr. Burnson?
Yeah, and that RFP should be contingent upon continued funding from MTA.
Okay. If MTA wants to go along with this, this elephant, I don't know what color the elephant is, be my guess, but I must tell you that I said early on, I remember Mr. Savornich was listening, did I tell you, this is a failure then, and it's a failure now, and it's good money thrown after bad.
Okay, Mr.?
And I can say non-shufully, I told you...
Is Mr. Holden the chairman of the Transportation Committee?
You remember that?
Yes, I do.
All right, Mr. Savornich, move with the previous question.
I'd like to thank the chairman of the Transportation Committee, Mr. Holden, for his, for his articulation of this issue.
He's the only one that has two, two chairs.
I understand, Mr. President. The question that I do have is that I seconded Mr. Burnson's amendment in regards to instructing the Department of Transportation to move, move out quickly on issuing a new RFP for the Smart Shuttle program. The question that I do have, as raised by staff, is that if we go ahead and ask you to embark on that endeavor, are there funds that we have earmarked for the program to continue that would make the reissuance of an RFP worthwhile or not? So we can go through this entire endeavor to draft an RFP, send out an RFP, solicit responses from the RFP, grade the RFP, award an RFP, and then say, oh, guess what? There are no more funds for this program. And so the question that I have is, is that, is not this Smart Shuttle program, we have funding for this program for how many more years?
We, we have funding for one year. But MTA reserves the right to review the program after six months. So we're really looking, they, they contract a number of services themselves.
Okay, well, my, my question would be, is that I wouldn't want the city to go through all of the time and expense to go through an RFP exercise if we do not have some clear indication from the MTA that this is a program that they're not going to slice and dice after the, after the contract is up. And so I don't have a problem supporting Mr. Burnson's amendment, but I want to have some reassurances from MTA that the city's not going to be spending money on RFP for nothing.
Point of order, information, the motion is contingent upon MTA continuation.
Was it contingent, Mr. Burnson?
Yes, it is contingent upon, you know, the MTA continuing. What I want in place is the RFP at the same time, so that if MTA continues to fund it, that we can go out, we're ready to go with the new, the new RFP.
I want to be supportive of your amendment. The only thing that I want to ensure, Mr. Burnson, is that we do not engage in an exercise in futility in regards to preparing an RFP and soliciting responses, not knowing that MTA is not going to continue to fund the program. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Burnson?
Mr. Farrar, I believe staff was going to respond to that.
Okay.
Maybe I can help on that. In acting to fund the Smart Shuttle program, MTA also devoted a fair amount of time to talking about a business plan between the city and MTA for services of this kind. And one of the, one of the thoughts that I had was, they intend to put that, to work with us to put that business plan together immediately, and I think that that will clarify the funding issue and the, the future of Smart Shuttle. I think that would be the time to move on an RFP.
I think that needs to be articulated again, Mr. President, so the maker of the amendment could hear it.
What was that? What did you say?
What, what I...
Did you argue with me?
No, not at all. No.
It's contingent upon MTA continuation, that's all.
Bring some decorum.
We're prepared, we're prepared to go out with it. If the continuation...
Okay.
We'll cement in the continuation and then proceed with preparing an RFP.
Okay. Mr. Mr. Burnson moves the previous question.
We need all the help we can get.
Any objections? All right, we have, what do we have before us?
A mess.
Item number 19, and there's amendment on the desk to request DOT to issue a new RFP, and that would be contingent on funding from the MTA.
The RFP, of course, coming to committee before it's released, Mr. President.
Yeah. Okay, prepare the roll on that. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved.
Transportation staff, you listen to Chairman Holden, Chairman Burnson, forgets your...
Okay. Yeah, you got a lot of chairs in that Transportation Committee.
Plenty of them, Mr. President.
Okay.
Like the Croatian Marlin.
Okay, do we have to vote on, as amended, or?
Mr. President?
Prepare the roll as amended.
Mr. President?
Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. We had a previous question. Now, what do you want, Mr. Holden?
All right, Mr. President, an item 29 on Wednesday's agenda last week, I'd like to ask for, it's a REAP item, REAP program in my district, I'd like to ask for reconsideration, put it back on the agenda, continue it for two weeks.
It was on last Wednesday?
Yeah, you can do that. Next legislative date?
No, we didn't meet on a Friday.
That's right.
That's right. All right, is there any objections to Mr. Holden's reconsideration of 29 on Wednesday's agenda?
The borough ours.
Okay, then we have the matter before us, and he, he asks to be continued? How long? Two weeks? Okay.
Without objection, so ordered. Next item, Madam Clerk.
This is the time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
Ah, yes, let's see. Mr. Richard Robinson. Mr. Robinson? Go right ahead, sir.
Mr. President, members, 80 percent of America's gross national product is small If those businesses are to grow, tax relief must be given to the business community. If you reform the city's tax code, you encourage the growth of business and the city's tax Taxes are the price we pay for civilized society. For, for some time, the city's been arguing about whether it's going to reform the city's tax code. I think it's about time the city reforms the city's tax code. I can recall back when I was a kid in the '60s on the campus, University of Michigan, before Tom Monahan and I started store number two of Domino's Pizza, that if the city of Ypsilanti had a similar tax code to that of Los Angeles, you wouldn't have pizzas delivered to your storefronts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Clear it, clear it.
Motions for posting and referral?
Okay, motions for posting and referral, without objection, so ordered.
You have excuses on the desk. Councilmember Savornich requests to be excused Wednesday, July 5th, City Business meets Council Policy.
Let him have what he wants.
Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused Friday, July 7th, City Business meets Council Policy.
That one we want to vote on.
Unanimous vote.
The desk is clear.
Okay, we do have some adjourned motions. Would everyone please stand? Members of the council, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Jack Horton. He was retired chairman of the Board of, and chief executive officer, Southern California Edison. Leaves two daughters and a son. Might point out that his wife passed away three days before he passed away. I'd also ask that we adjourn in memory of William E. Simon, former Secretary of the Treasury. Served as treasurer and president of the US Olympic Committee during the 1984 Summer Olympics in Los Angeles. He was inducted into the US Olympic Hall of Fame in 1991. Leaves his wife and seven children. And I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Don Klosterman, who passed away, former manager of the LA Rams. Someone who was an all-star football player at Loyola University, was in a skiing accident, and he was told he would never walk again, and he had the guts to walk again, and he, even though he had to use a cane, he was an outstanding individual, and he was sorely Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President, colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of John Ronaldo. He passed away recently at the age of 72. He was a longtime music teacher at Eagle Rock High School. He created one of the best classic jazz education programs in the nation. He was born in Algen, Illinois. Ronaldo inherited his interest in music from his father, Lawrence. He has a music degree, or had a music degree from the University of Illinois. At Eagle Rock, he built a first-rate jazz program, and his senior high jazz band was the first to compete five consecutive times at the Monterey Jazz Festival. to compete five consecutive times at the Monterey Jazz Festival. His Jazz at Eagle Rock series brought noted jazz players like bassist Ray Brown, guitarist Mondo Lo, and drummer Shelly Mann, and Louis Balsin to the school to mentor up-and-coming jazz students and perform in the Sunday evening concerts. He also played trumpet in jazz bands that worked at the Beverly Wilshire and Beverly Hills Hotels. He was known as a strict taskmaster. Mann once said, "Ronaldo was a leader who knows how to get his bands to play good jazz." Ronaldo retired from teaching in 1987, but continued to play while into the 1990s. He passed away after a long illness at his home in Eagle Rock.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, would you join me in adjourning in memory of Ara Parker, who passed on June the 10th, 2000. Ms. Parker organized and implemented the first daycare program for the YWCA of Los Angeles in 1970. In 1983, she organized and planned the first before and after-school program on the school site for the YWCA and the Los Angeles Unified School District. She was well-known in the community for her outstanding work with children. She has served on numerous boards, such as the Mayor's Advisory Committee on Child Care and the National Black Child Development Institute. She is survived by her children Gregory Parker and Dr. Marilyn D. Parker.
Call the roll. All right, the council is adjourned.